This evening we focus on the issues of our city. Bless us and keep us in your care, watchovers. Thank you again for the opportunity just to be here, to live in a great community. Bless our mayor and his leadership, and I pray for all this tonight in the name of Christ. We ask your blessing. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, Reeve.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call, please.
Groyl.
Here.
Here.
Amy.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Doc.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Mr. Brown contacted me. He's out of town this evening for business and knew he wasn't going to be here. Next in our meeting agenda, we have the approval of the regular council meeting minutes of March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, finance committee meeting minutes of March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and the parks and rec committee meeting of March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Are there any errors, omissions, additions to those minutes? I have one, Marty. I don't have any credit, but the parks and rec on that committee, but it just said, you can put council for president or something. That's the only one I have. Any others? Those meeting minutes will stand as approved. Next, we have audience participation. If you would like to address the Ironton City Council, you can step to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. But first, this evening, we have an economic update with invited guests, Bill Dinges and Jeremy Clay.
Thank you. Appreciate the privilege to be with you this evening. And you know, I tell you, I think it goes off, you say, when you're out in the valley and you see people that are looking, doing business and coming back home, there's a special feeling about growing up in Ironton. You know, it's a small town, but there's the regions that I think people like myself who grew up in country, you didn't have that linkage and that family kind of thing that even though I spent many, many years here at the university and all, but I applaud Ironton to keep that hometown feeling in what you're doing in that thing. That helps us in recruiting. We get people wanting to come back to bring their children back and grow up in Ironton. Helps us in companies and people who have gone off and very successful, and they're wanting to do something back home. So it really says a lot, so it makes our job kind of fun at times, working with those people to say that. But you met Jeremy before and Ralph Klein. We worked closely with Ralph and do a lot of projects together. He was with you a couple of weeks ago and kind of gave you an update on all of what we're hoping to come, we're hoping to then have a, have an award made, and we think now that maybe next Monday, or if not, in the middle of May. But we're looking for great things there. So since he's covered that, he's kind of third street in a parking garage, we thought we'd say more with economic development pieces and able that Jeremy kind of gives a cover from the, from the southern end of Ironton.
Thank you, thank you everyone for being able to attend today. So of course, we've had quietly, we've had Orkin coming to the town on four seventy five Commerce Drive. We've renovated that facility and now we currently have about twenty-four employees. This is Orkin, the relocation of the Wheeler Burke facility into the Tri-State. So we remodeled that facility with assistance of our contractor, Jerry Rowe, and they took possession here toward the end of probably three weeks ago, two weeks ago. So again, they haven't had a groundbreaking, they don't really want to make a big deal because they've shifted, but again, they are open in operation right now. As we moved down, of course, you know, in partnership with the mayor, we did a significant amount of environmental phase one and phase twos, as LDC obtained six hundred thousand dollars in brownfield grant assessments. I think we completed about twenty-five phase ones, please don't hold me as figures, and probably about twelve phase twos. The majority of all that work was in Ironton. And again, we did a significant amount of Ironton properties with that as well, too. But the majority of that work and the intent of that grant was Irons and Iron. Of course, it had vapor intrusion issues, which we talked about previously, and we've gotten that documentation resolved, as you see, the Dollar General expanded down that corner a lot. But we're still working legally to get the environmental covenant recorded, and that has taken us, golly, nine months with attorneys from the state, as well as with us and then with our partners. So we're getting extremely close. It's just the Dollar General keeps changing ownership. Now it's held out of company out of California, so now we're working with them and their attorneys now to accept the state's environmental covenant. So again, that continues to move well. We're hoping to have that resolved very soon, but it's taken a significant amount of time. But in another note, we have, of course, have our preliminary designs done with the spec building fourteen, which we're going to build on Irons and Iron site. I already have my building permit. The facility will be twenty-two thousand square feet. It is our intent. And now we are currently doing the survey work. And we're also doing the appraisal work, and then of course, in partnership with our county commissioners, we'll be applying for funding through the Department of Development, a grant slash loan to build that facility. So again, it's our intent to get that heavily out of the ground before winter hits. And again, you know, typically we used to build it in seven months, and now I can't get the electrical gear in seven months. So for timeframes, I can't tell you yet until we actually get a contract awarded and I can procure those long lead time items. So again, we will start with that here before long. And again, it'll make a big difference on that property as we continue with this other environmental work, as we finalize that. Again, with Irons and Irons, just real quick, there's going to be a section of the property, approximately four acres, that we can't lift the restrictions on, so it will always be a parking lot. But we've been able to take the twenty-two acres and limit that restriction through all this additional work to just about four acres. And now the property is developable. It is bankable now, because again, you can't build a facility, we can't get a financial loan on. And so we've kind of do this long process, which takes us a tremendous amount of time and hundreds of thousand dollars, but we've been able to limit that and make that property viable now, as you'll start seeing with the Dollar General and with our investment coming into mind here, too. As you look at our movement down the street, of course, our next big project in partnership with the county commissioners, MCAO, is asbestos projects. We project to have two of them, one very large one here in town, or two in town. So we're applying as part of the incentives for three grants in the county, and two of those asbestos grants are for Ironton. The US Bank facility across the street, we'll be renovating floors two through six. They all have asbestos in them, as well as some work in the boiler areas. So that'll be work that will start, of course, we've applied for the grant funding, which we are extremely likely to get, and then hopefully we'll start bidding that phase of work for there, as well as the Masonic loss building down the street. It'll also be included in the grant. Timeframe for work cycles once we're approved, we anticipate US Bank asbestos removal to take approximately five to six months. We look for the other facility property to take us two to three weeks. So again, more progress pretty fast, but once we get approved and we get the projects out to bid for the rest.
Lots of good things going there. Other things, Spring Valley Bus, they purchased a facility after across the lumber company and using and running a lot of powder fleet out of there, and the fleets continue to grow, and they're serving a lot of military contracts and great, great employment for school bus drivers in the summer and making runs and so on. So that's, it's a good group there with the leadership. You know, Mike Moore, you all approved, Mike Moore's new building, he's building a new facility there, and you gave the official break on taxes for ten years to help, help that develop. So that one is, is moving well. So as you come around, we've, we've got a major, a major project. We are very close to being able to ink and share with everyone on the Gateway Center project. We think that is really going to be a great benefit to the city. Spoke west with Cory Leach, is working on the Dairy Queen. His architect and the Dairy Queen architect has been duking it out on what he wants and what they'll permit, and he says he believes he'll have approved engineer plans by the end of next week. So we are hoping to get that one really in motion while we're this good building season and for blizzards aren't wanting as much in the winter. So that, that's moving well. Brumberg Building, we're working with a client now that is back and forth with her, and we believe that has potential of coming forth and developing a number of condominiums. So, so we feel really good about that part. So overall, the pieces are following better. It's, you know, with the Irons and Irons, it's just been such a hassle getting it to where we can really use it without problems, and we're going to have at least the ability to have four very nice twenty thousand plus buildings on it. So if we can get four, two, three buildings, and we're able to set a base of a hundred and thirty-five thousand acre by putting, putting the Dollar General. So now we can, we can use that to leverage to really make things happen. Got to get a basis, and that land just was hard to get a basis, and we couldn't with all the problems Honeybrook had on selling bears and everything. So I think that, I think things have come well, so it's good. Around the region, things are continuing to pop. We're working closely with, we feel AK Steel, we feel that we need to be a strong partner, and Ohio's willing. Cap Kim, a new, they make a lot of their electrolyte for the new battery. Most of your telephones, your, your battery, probably the actual electrolyte in the lithium battery was made by, it was like to the Cap Kim, but it was transported here in boroughs. And now what we want to do is make it with local craftsmen and, and not have it all shipped in. So, so that, that is working well. We're working on one other company down there that is just looking positive. At the point, we've got a couple of good things we think happening. We got an option on, on our sixty thousand square foot spec building that we've had for about a year and a half to try to sell it, so we have a written contract on it. We think that'll be a good one. So overall, the county is, is really doing well. If, if things go right, within the next, next three months, we should not have an empty building of any size for sale in the county here, let for lease. So if we can get this twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand built, we, we must try to, we're going to head and serve them off a second right with it. And if we need a, if we need a sixty thousand, we can combine two lots. If we need, you know, but we thought we'd start with the twenty. And we held them for a while, and we didn't sell the building, but we built a new building right beside it for a company that wanted a different kind of building. So we feel that'll be a start.
The twenty, the one year building, the twenty-two thousand square feet, where's that going to be on the property? Is it close to the Dollar General, or is it?
It's more toward the middle, and Reese and I didn't want to, want, wanted to put it on either end. The lower end is beside the three and a half, four acre restricted area. Now, it's restricted from building on, but it's not restricted from parking on, and we can see that as a tremendous boat sales or car lot, or any place where you're out in the open, any type of thing that's your trailer sales, something to where that you've got a lot of product being moved, but it's, it's not a building. So we, we saved that lot to go with the, the three or four acres of free space, and then on the, on the upper end, where we have the Dollar General, we gave the greatest amount of property we could, and we saved a track in behind it. So we have a, have a very, we have an L shape that comes out of that property that's unique. So we're saving those two, hoping to get the client that they fit well with. And for the generic building, we have two in the middle, so we're using one of those three acre lots for that.
So how many, how many of the buildings you said will fit up there, the twenty thousand?
Easily.
Four of them.
You'd easily put four twenties, but you probably could put a couple twenty-two, twenty-fives and some thirties and maybe a forty. So it has potential for some bigger buildings, too, if we have clients for it.
And you anticipate, once this one gets filled, then you turn it over and do the rest going to that location, or?
I see us, I see us starting another building. I'm going to actually start trying to see the state will allow us two at a time for a while.
So predictions, aren't they? At least, at least two or three times a week.
Every, every time I move over, Gator, you know, Gator, your rant moves out, win a mobile and get a lift. So I stay on Cory. If I show you my text to Paul Corby, it's a long, you know, and we've.
Is there a window I can tell people like, there'll be groundbreaking between this day?
I believe, I sincerely believe we will have a groundbreaking, and I'm expecting it in May. I mean, I really am, Chris. We were supposed to have them in the fall also, so I, I'm always cautious, because when you deal with the architects and, and we run into such problem in economic development, you don't know the land. That's the beauty of, of being able to do something with the Ironton Industrial Park or with the Dayton Mall property or the Point or area. We don't, we control that. But you know, it, it becomes problematic when you're dealing with private owners and their time schedule and their issues, and many of them never helped the building. They don't understand the, the kind of things that, that Jeremy's been going through to, to get things. We've, we've got a facility coming in up at South Point that we actually applied for a, a building contract last year so that we would get it under the old standards, because all the building standards have been written, so it was the type of a building that that would be an issue for. So, so you just, and the average consumer, they don't, you know, we get a call after they've blown it, you know, after they've gotten in trouble with Bill Tool, the inspectors or someone, they called, said, Bill, can you help? You know, and, and they've already burnt the bridges and missed, and then they asked me to, it's tough. And, and so it's much more fun when we're doing it, and I know Jeremy's in charge and this will be done right, so. But I'd be glad to answer any other questions.
Appreciate it.
We noticed the progress up there. At least they changed the sign, Dairy Queen sign. It's progress.
It's, I think we went over five minutes, so I appreciate it. And we do appreciate it. You know, it's the things like with Mike Moore, you know, just knowing that we can depend on you all supporting customers who are willing to build buildings. And just like when we talked about putting a spec building in, we can tell a customer we marketed, you know, to put this building on, on, on the broadband system or put it on the system will cost us two thousand dollars a month. It's so expensive to market these buildings. So, so you've got to be able to, be able to hit the ground and not have to wait two months for getting an answer. So knowing that you are willing to be supportive with incentives, the tax incentives on the, on the taxes, so on, that's, that's powerful, and we appreciate it, you know, so.
One more thing, too, if anyone gets a chance, is, of course, we see renovation next door at three fifteen. We have, the Cap Kim team now has office facilities now in the city of Ironton. Fantastic individuals. They're all about relationships. So if you get time to stop in and say hi, highly recommend it. They are fantastic. And again, a lot of bright individuals. We anticipate ten to fifteen engineers being stationed out of that office through the construction cycle of the plant. So anyway, and you see the building permit on the window, that's what that is, that's renovation, that's based for this.
And we don't, we don't put a lot of stuff in the press. I mean, you know, you look at other cities and so on, it's, it's a different animal. And we, whether it's Orkin or, or Spring Valley or, or Cap Kim, we quietly do it. If they want to say it, we, we let them, but if they don't want to say anything, we don't push it.
Last thing I have, I didn't catch the business that was at four seventy-five Commerce Drive. Is that Orkin, is that what you're, yeah, okay. Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
And we put, we put a huge amount of money into it.
Yeah, fifty thousand.
So it's, it's a nice building, so.
Thank you for that, Dave.
Thank you, guys.
Others that would like to address the Ironton City Council this evening?
Well, I guess I'd first speak my piece. What do you say?
Name and address.
My name's Joy Arthur. I live in seventeen twenty-three South Fifth Street. For the last three years, I have called the mayor and for the last year, been ignored by the secretary, who I know how they do things, they kind of fish it up to the side and it ain't important, but seventeen oh four Sixth Street has removed a sidewalk all the way from Sixth Street to the alley. I have called for the last three years, asked them to have it fixed. I have spoken to a couple of people on council about it. Nothing seems to be getting done. You know, everybody says, well, you know, we got this to do and this to do. Well, I know you do, but you know why? I pay my taxes just like everybody else in this city, and I think it needs to be done. I cannot even go up to the nursing home and get my sister and bring her to my home and go walking around the block in her wheelchair, because there's no sidewalk there. And I'm not trying to be mean, I'm just saying, you know, if it was y'all's front yard or y'all's around the block, you know, you'd like to have it looking a little nicer than what it looks. Anyway, the person who done it did not repair it and did not have the money to do that. Well, you know, in my house, if the roof comes off and I don't have no money to fix it, I can't wait on y'all to come fix it, you know? Or just, you know, in general, things that, you know, fall apart in my house. And I'm not trying to be mean, I just would like to have it fixed, so I can at least take my sister around the block in the wheelchair. But like I said, it's been for the last three years, it's been like this.
Joy, we do have a code enforcement officer that can come and take a look.
I already spoke to him.
And, 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 I mean, not just for you specifically, but anytime, anytime we have a complaint, I always mention that we do have the ability on our website to report a problem and an issue, and then it gets put in a work queue, just, just so you know, just so you don't feel like you're being ignored by a certain person, or it's personal or anything like that. There is the ability to put a, to file a complaint or put in a problem in, in the system and that gets put in a work queue.
Well, I had called, called and talked to the mayor back in the first year. Then I got handed down to a Thomas guy, who apparently only is there sometimes, sometimes not. Then I got moved to a lady who's not been there. Apparently she's not very well, so you know, I mean, you know, I mean, right's right, wrong's wrong. To me, I think this is wrong. You know, if you tear something out, if it had been me over on my street, it'd been fixed. If I lived on Sixth Street, it'd have been fixed, but you know, it's all complaining, nobody fixes anything. And I pay my taxes regardless, even when you all, you all put extra on my water bill, I still pay my taxes. And I'm trying to be mean, I just, and I know how things work. I'm not ignorant to the system. I know exactly. I've done my education when it comes to this stuff. It just needs to be fixed, and everybody needs to quit putting it on the back burner and fix it. And it's sad that I can't even take my sister around the block in her wheelchair.
Well, the, the things like that, the day-to-day operations, sidewalks, street repair, those kind of things, the, the reason I mentioned the website is because although right now you have a chance to publicly address it, we, we couldn't do anything about it even if we wanted to. It's, it's the, it's up to the mayor to do it, and he wanted to address you, so he's got his hand up, so.
Yeah, and I, I agree with everything you said. You have been calm for three years.
I know.
I've been on Brett for about three years, too. As his public service director, that's who handles and issues those statements. Susan has got that out. We actually already have a purchase order for the contractor to go in and do it. I think the weather's kind of been a holdup here lately, but it should be starting any day now. It's something I know that you're frustrated, I didn't, you know, it's good to be facing.
Did you make me?
Yeah, and it, we, it is supposed to be happening soon, and it, it's, it's not a pretty process. It is a process where we have to hire somebody to get to do that, and then we have to assess the property owner's taxes on, to pay for it. So eventually they will pay for it regardless, as they did at the time, and I remember Brett and myself being down there stating, you have to put this back, and when they didn't, we told them what would happen. Has been a lengthy process, you have been called for three years. I'm not disagreeing with that, but I, I definitely want you to think that I have been ignoring you. It's more so just been getting the people, the Martin departments to get on the ball and make it happen, and it's happened.
And for you, I'm not technology savvy, but I do have a daughter who I could have do all that for me.
I just want you to know it's available, Joy.
Well, okay, and I'm not, you know, trying to be mean about anything. I just, you know, some people are like me, I'm not a technology person, you know? I worked at the hospital and the only thing I could do is what they showed me, you know? I'm not being mean, but you know, I just think that it needed to be done, and I think I've been very patient, and you know, I'll be going down the chain of command, and I just, you know, I just feel that it needs to be addressed, and I hope it gets addressed.
I agree with you. I'm all, I'm not disagreeing at all.
Thank you.
But you hopefully will see something here soon.
I hope so.
Any others?
Orkin. My name's Patty Russell. I'm a property owner on South Tenth Street here in Ironton, and I have some concerns since they blocked the road in front of the nursing home. We are having serious problems with the ambulances, the semi trucks.
The horses.
Everything going through the alley. I went to take my garbage out the other evening. It was five o'clock in the evening, perfectly fine. A gentleman was upset because he couldn't go through, as he has for what, a hundred years, fifty years, that Clinton Street has been there, and I almost got hit taking my garbage out. This is a bright, I parked my car in my garage back there. Thank God I had a backup camera on my car, or I would be buying a new car. Those trucks are coming through there, I mean, a big Pepsi truck, the ambulances, everybody. And everybody's mad when they start to go fly the nursing home, because they can't go through. I mean, it's just something that's just happened. There's people that bought the house on the corner, found out that they own half of Clinton Street.
But happened somebody home half of Clinton Street.
One of the other times, please. Patty was talking, and if you're looking to talk, I need you to state your name for her.
We're all very concerned, because we all live on that street. Everyone that lives on that street, we're all a certain age, we're all retired, we've owned our homes for many years. I mean, like I said, I'm concerned with the children that come to visit, grandma and grandpa, that's going to be out there, just like myself. I went to take my trash out at five o'clock in the evening, and this guy is, he's upset, because for years he's went through there. He come down the alley and I'm standing there, you know? He did slow down once he got past me to see if he hit me, but you know, that was all that I've been laying there in the alley. But I mean.
Patty, I, I feel, I feel disconnected to your story. What street are you talking about specifically?
Clinton.
Clinton Street?
Yes.
And what are you talking about blocking it off?
Okay. They have found out, the people who bought the, the property, I'm sure the mayor.
I was gonna say, I could explain, I, if you would like, I could explain.
Please. Well, someone should explain to.
Yeah, so on Good Friday, I got a call, and it was a guy was putting a fence across Clinton Street from Twelfth, where they enter for the.
On the lot.
Harbor Health, Jolins. And so I said, I called someone out, said, hey, I don't know what's going on up there, just, let's make sure we put a stop to it, while further finding out that Clinton Street at some point was vacated, and I don't know why or when that happened, but it's been vacated, and this guy figured it out in his property deed or somehow, and just took upon himself that he was going to build a fence across Twelfth Street, like the Clinton part of, in front of Twelfth. But it, it's a messy situation. And from talking with, you know, explaining that to Harbor Health, they, their corporate was working to get in contact and try and purchase that part of the parcel. I mean, it's like, what kind of person does it? I don't know, I don't care if they hear me on this, but it's like, it's really bad. I don't know if there's a process where we can unvacate, that would be, we could. That would probably be the best thing to do, because I, I.
I'm not saying that, but I.
It's the Sixth Street?
Technically, yes, but it, it served as like a drive for the Jolins. So it's been for like emergency vehicles and stuff. I don't care if why they would have vacated.
Did you find the vacation anywhere?
They did, yeah. I sent Susan out, and she was like, it's been vacated, we talked with them, they're going to work on trying to purchase that part. Hopefully, none of the other landowners who own part of Clinton Street would try and do the same thing. I, not, it doesn't make sense to me why it was ever vacated, but I'm assuming maybe it was, it could have been the nursing home, because they had parking, and wanted to have access on Clinton Street for that, I don't know, or further on down. Because you're talking about an area between Tenth, if Tenth existed there.
Yes.
Yeah, it's like a half of Tenth Street, you know? To Twelfth, on Clinton. That's the distance of this, this area that's been vacated. It, it's.
We understand by talking with the gentleman who originally lived in that home many, many years ago, by his granddaughter, who indicated that Mr. Brown owned that property. And when Mr. Dalton wanted to put the nursing home there, Mr. Brown said, I will sell you that property. Mr. Dalton said, we will buy it, and the guy said, no, if you're putting a nursing home there, let's do a handshake. Y'all can use that property. Somewhere in the records, there should be something.
I heard many records have handshakes.
Yeah, that's why I said there should be, you know, it's like me handshake and you, saying, okay, yeah, you can use the alley. So if you don't hit me, take my car.
Patty, I, I know it's not a great answer, but you have some, some of the answer. The other thing I would like to know is about unvacating a, a street.
It may have to be a taken, instead of a. If it's.
Give it a, a mention?
Yeah.
But if any of us look at our deeds, I'm sure that we can say.
Plus, if it's been used as a street for all its access to twenty-one years, that gives you.
Yes.
Well, and the other issue is, it's, it's public safety with animals trying to get to the.
Right.
Nursing home, and public safety for residents.
What's gonna happen if there's a far, and the far trucks need to get through there, and they're going, oh, well, we can't go here, because there's a fence up.
Got too many to talk about.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so I, I think there's two approaches to this. One, the mayor's talked to Harbor Health, and they're, they're trying to purchase that. But regardless of whether they purchase it or not, I think it's incumbent upon us to, to try to do what we can as a city to, to reacquire Clinton Street. And unfortunately, that will involve litigation. And we can't discuss that in public, but we can discuss that in private, and we, and we will do so.
Can you all do anything about the alley? I mean, those trucks have.
Tore it up.
I mean, they've tore it up. I mean, it's just that gravel, we as neighbors and citizens, and we've all bought gravel ourselves, and filled that in, and never asked the city, has never.
I'm sure the mayor can send the street, guys down there.
Because it's horrible to go through there. And I mean, you know, you're sitting constantly, all day long, you've got ambulances, you've got trucks, you've got the people that work there, everybody's using that alley. And it's, it's gravel, that's exactly what it's been. I've lived there almost forty years. Okay, so I know for forty years that's been Clinton Street, because the sign used to be at the end of my driveway.
Mr. Perry?
Bring us help, and this at all with PUC, I mean, sewage sanitation.
Yeah, we're just trying to look at it, I want to see when it was vacated, why it was vacated, we're just trying to look, take a look at it.
Because there has to be a water line and a gas line that goes through there.
Maybe, there might be.
Our water comes through that way. It comes from Twelfth Street over and out to the ass.
And the gas also.
Regardless, we'll, we, we will not, we'll not leave that inactive. We won't have no action after this, now, now that I'm connected to your story.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We will, we'll make sure that, that we do our part to, to reacquire Clinton Street, and make sure that it's passable, okay?
We just appreciate it, because, you know, there's many a times, late at night, you know, the ambulances go through there. I mean, what are they gonna do? They can go halfway.
Yeah.
And my, my personal family, or your family member, could be the one that that ambulance is after.
Sure.
They're going like, oh, well, we can't get through.
And, and fire and police.
Right, and the far trucks, like I said, I live right there on the corner. And for, during the night, the far trucks go through there, ambulance is going through there. You know, even the physician that comes there, and they can go only halfway, and then there's the alley, and they gotta come through there, but they can't actually get up to the nursing home. And it's something that you all need to look at.
Thank you, thank you for bringing Sir Hart's kitchen.
Can I say something?
Tell me your name.
Martha Grant.
Yes.
And I live right there on Tenth Street too.
Okay.
What I'm worried about is those people in the nursing home. Medical should come first. I don't care who it is, medical should come first to those people. Everybody thinks all the way through those people in the nursing home, because they don't want to deal with them. That's not true. There are sick people over there, my sister died back there in that room. And I'm gonna tell you something, those people were so nice to us, but right now, they have an Alzheimer's place there too. Those people are locked in there. But, comes to this, most of those people don't walk. You try to get all those people in a wheelchair, or in a bed, you get that gurney out that door, where are you gonna take them? What if it's pouring down rain like this, or we have a windstorm like we had the other day? What is gonna happen to that? He needs to put those holes back, and then he's got ten by ten squares, and open that up until you all figure something out about it. Even Moose, I don't know what Moose's real name is, Mole Miser, yeah, whatever. Well, I've always known him as Moose, but anyway, he came up there the other day to bring his wife up there, and he was just sitting there scratching his head, and he says, what's going on? You can't do this.
Well, Martha, we can't make people do the, do the right, well, you can't make people do the right thing, but we may be able to, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any else? Moving on to communications, we have none. Reports, there are none. Ordinances, if the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-four thirteen, first reading by title.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for the sale of the twenty-ten International Back Truck, and authorizing the mayor to sell said truck to the highest investment bidder in the Clonan Emergency Second Reading.
Bob?
Yeah, I'd like to make motion that we suspend the rules. Give ordinance twenty-four thirteen, second, third reading by title only, possible adoption.
Hang on a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Clear.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye. The rules have been suspended to give ordinance twenty-four thirteen, second and third reading by title only. If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-four thirteen, second and third reading by title only.
Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for the sale of the twenty-ten International Back Truck, and authorizing the mayor to sell said truck to the highest investment bidder in the Clonan Emergency Second Reading. Authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for the sale of the twenty-ten International Back Truck, and authorizing the mayor to sell said truck to the highest investment bidder in the Clonan Emergency Second Reading.
Bob?
Move to adopt ordinance twenty-four thirteen.
Hang on a second. Roll call, please.
Clear.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Harry.
Ordinance twenty-four thirteen is adopted. Resolutions, there are none, miscellaneous. Bridge, bridge. Can you look, at least, and let, let us know what kind of action we can take regarding Clinton Street? What options we have available to us as a, as a legislative body?
This is a.
If you need to take time to research it, then it's fine, but I just wanted to put that in as a bonus. Nate?
I have two items. First, I'd like to.
Do you have your?
First, I'd like to nominate Brian McFann and Aaron Hyten to the Income Tax Review Board.
As, as our nomination.
As part of council's nomination, yes.
Second. Mr. Hany, second, by Hany. Roll call, please.
Clear.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye. Congratulations to Mr. McFann. I'm sure that we threw Mr. Hyten. You, you did ask them, right?
Yes, I think I did. I talked to him today. I said, we're gonna know what day.
Okay, from nothing to nothing.
Right. Same nomination.
Okay.
I would like to nominate one, give this to the tax review.
Okay.